Good morning. I'll call the Commission to be your order. Madam Secretary, please call the robe.
Western Commissioner Johnny Williams.
Present.
Eastern Commissioner Marilyn Jackson.
Present.
Present Commissioner Lee Morris.
Present. If you'll all join me with a pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. September 25th is the fall day. Today we have, we need to approve today's agenda. We have approval of some minutes that we've all had sent to us. We have August 28th, regular session. August 28th, closed session. We have, that was our SMO 610.021.3 personnel. We also have September, the 4th, 2025, regular session. We have September 11th, 2025, regular session. And we also have 18, September 18th, 2025, regular session. So Ms. Matty's been busy getting our minutes ready. I didn't see anything, does anybody see anything wrong with the minutes? Really good job on that. We are going to keep, we have several things on the agenda. I don't think it will take too long to get through them all, but I will keep them all in order that we have. And we have no financials, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda statement.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Okay, so the first thing on the agenda today is a pretty important thing. So Ms. Paula, our county clerk, she's going to swear in, our brand-new house counsel. First time ever in the history of our county to have an in-house counselor. So Ms. Paula, if you'll come up here, and I think I've got Ms. Brenda that's going to take some pictures.
Who's right?
And we'll get Mr. Mark Hamilton, and we'll kind of, yeah, we'll let you guys do your thing.
Okay, I'm going to read, and then you'll repeat after me.
Sounds good.
Got a piece there because it's kind of a long one, so. "I, Mark Hamilton, do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri."
"I, Mark Hamilton, do solemnly swear that I'll support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri."
"That I will maintain the respect due courts of justice, judicial officers, and members of my profession, and will at all times conduct myself with dignity, becoming of an officer of the court in which I appear."
"That I will maintain the respect of the courts of justice, judicial officers, and members of my profession, and will at all times conduct myself with dignity, becoming of an officer of the court in which I appear."
"That I will never seek to mislead the judge or jury by any artifice or false statement or fact or law."
"That I will never seek to mislead the judge or jury by any artifice or false statement of fact or law."
"That I will at all times conduct myself in accordance with the rules of professional conduct and..."
"That I will at all times conduct myself in accordance with the rules of professional conduct and..."
"That I will practice law to the best of my knowledge and ability and with consideration for the defenseless and oppressed."
"That I will practice law to the best of my knowledge and ability and with consideration for the defenseless and oppressed."
"So help me God."
"So help me God."
Congratulations, congratulations, Mark. Before we get started on the next item on the agenda, I wanted to introduce Ms. Ruthie, Mark's wife, so just kind of wave, let's see who you are. Glad you're here today. Glad you guys are getting ready to move down here to our area. We just bought a house in Christian County, so we're real proud of that. And my wife, Janet, wave. She's never been to one of my meetings before. She tries to stay away from all the meetings that I have. She's a smart lady, so. And then I also wanted to make a motion to just let you all know that Ms. Brenda Porterfield over here has just started, this is her second week. So when we were on vacation last week, she started, and Ms. Carrie in the HR department has helped her a lot, and it helped us a lot while we didn't have someone for all these months. But we're really glad to have Ms. Brenda. She comes from Stratford City Government, and is doing a really good job in just a short period of time, and is really going to help the commissioners and help our counselor, in-house counselor, so we're really happy to have her, too. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Ms. Paula again, and we're going to be talking about the 2025 tax levy certification. You're going to certify that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, I get you both, 24 and 25 to look at. We had all the entities complete their performance and return them back to me, and I certified their tax levies to the state auditor's office. This is what we have that I want, that I'm going to give to the collector to put in for our 2025 tax levy, so he can print taxes, tax scores. You'll notice at the bottom, the assessed value for 2025 is not there yet. I won't be able to put that out there until I run the reports at the end of this month, end of September, and then I can put that, those values on there. But other than that, that's what I mean.
Very, very good. Any comments or questions concerning the tax levy? Okay, very good. I think it's interesting, Commissioner Jackson, I was listening to him kind of reading himself, and some of the schools have lowered their levies, some of the people have lowered their levy, and the tax entities, and I think that's good, anytime that we can lower them. I know we have a lot of people watching on YouTube right now, or will watch it after the meetings over at their convenience, but I do think that for our county, Christian County, what we've done the last three years, I just want to make note that our commissioners have voted to keep our levy the same for three years in a row, when every, those three years, our sales tax went down, our property tax values went up, and because of the Hancock Amendment, we could actually be justified in raising our levy. But we've, I think, been good stewards of our tax money, and I know the other two commissioners believe in that, and that, so we've remained ours the same, and I think that we're proud of that. So I congratulate the other two commissioners for making sure that we are good stewards of tax money in the county. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is purchasing manager, Ms. Kim, and I think that's...
You need a motion to accept.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am sorry.
I'd make a motion to accept the clerk's report and all the levies and certify them for the 2025. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Thank you. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, it passes. Thank you. Now you stay up here. We're going to have Ms. Kim come up. We're going to take care of voting pads and stands and software, all that's to do with elections.
Good morning, commissioners. Congratulations, Commissioner. This is, we did a sole source, 2025-11, for voting pads, stands, and software. This is for the county clerk's office to purchase the voting pads, trace and software. The vendor is the manufacturer and exclusive authorized representative for No Ink LLC equipment software. Christian County currently uses this vendor's equipment and software, so this is a compatibility issue, and that's why we did a sole source. We did advertise it in the newsletter, and we also advertised it in the headliner. Unless you want to say anything about it, I mean, it's a compatibility issue. So our recommendation for award is to No Ink LLC.
Okay. Any comments, questions on that? Seeing none. All in favor of accepting that bid?
We'll make a motion.
Oh, make a motion, I'm sorry. Motion. You have anything, Brenda?
Uh, no, I'm just trying to, I was trying to find it in my attachments here, which is very slow, but I don't think we have any issue.
I'll make the motion to approve the No Ink bid.
Second.
Second, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Thank you very much. So the next item, Ms. Kim is still up there. We're talking about with Mr. Richard, Johnson Controls.
So this agreement, and we're using our Sourcewell Cooperative Contract to do this. So originally, they came to you with one agreement that was approved, and then I think there was a lengthy discussion from another meeting that Johnson Controls came in, they realized they didn't see something they should have seen. So they have actually wanted to combine that first agreement to be approved, and the second agreement, it was never approved, it was discussed. So this is actually those two being combined, so they can have the same dates. So the agreement for the building facility performance, JCI initially offered as two separate quotes for the service, which you originally approved the first one. The first quote did not include the upgrade that we found later to be necessary. This agreement is a combination of those two. This agreement is a four-year agreement that will run through April 30th, 2029, utilizing our cooperative contract. And so a little history, and I don't know if you want to talk about this, or I can move right ahead.
So we have an AL unit on the Circuit Board Building, and we have our suppression system in through the ductworks. Different companies, their computers, you might say, use different language. Johnson Controls has their computer in there to make everything communicate properly together, so it all works together. So if this fails, then our complete air system in that building goes down, along with our fire alarms. Nothing's going to work. They no longer make that unit anymore, that control box that makes everything talk. We got that approved to have changed out. There are simply no parts available anymore. The warranty is out. They come back, and the PC that also is involved in that had to be upgraded to handle the new box. That's what we come to you last time. So if this system goes down, the whole building shuts down. We literally have no air coming into the building, not to mention the conditioned air. So there's no fresh air in that building. That building is sealed up, it's a positive pressure building. Therefore, we would have to shut down the building and evacuate the people after so many hours, no fresh air coming in. This is something that we are required to do, to keep that building functioning. Unfortunately, it's quite expensive, and now we're moving forward. This is, we've been working on this for several months now, trying to get this upgrade in, so we don't have catastrophic failure, and we don't have those issues of shutting down the course. So this is where we're at. We got the language straightened out.
Yes.
That was a big issue, was the two contracts had, the language did not match. So Kim's been working with Johnson Controls to get that corrected, and I'm assuming we have our turn to look at it.
Yes, and our counselor and Johnson Controls have been in discussions, so we finally came to an agreement. So at this point, we, and also, this is, of course, it's emergency services, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, 365. So what we would like to ask is that, for what we recommend to award this agreement to Johnson Controls for the building automated system services.
What was the new warranty set on this new stuff? How long? Do you remember by chance?
Well, we have a four-year contract.
So it's covered during the full contract?
Yes, yes.
And that's what for our monitoring, too, as that goes down, they know remotely that it's going to be.
I think that's very good. Any comments, questions?
Nothing other than, people don't realize how many different components and aspects go into running a facility, and keeping up with it is a monumental task, and I appreciate what you're doing to try to, you know, how did we live before computers, you know?
Yes.
We opened up the window and we let the fresh air in, you know, but now...
It was nice to walk over and put a rear on something and say, yes, I'm fixing this component, and we're, the rest of the building's fine. Now with the new building, it all works together, or it doesn't work at all?
That's true, yeah. Yeah, it's just where we've got to be, and got to take care of business to keep the building up and operating. I'm sure nobody really wants us to let everybody out.
Yes.
The only people that want out are the people that are in. I just want to say, but, all right, well, very good. I appreciate that. Do you have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the Sourcewell Contract, 080824.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes, thank you. And Richard, I just want to tell you while you're still up, you know, as I came in this morning, I've been watching, the grass is green enough, the falls here, and the mums are great. The campus is beautiful. A good job. Okay, the next item on the agenda is Highway Administrator, Ms. Beatles.
(Inaudible).
I'm sorry.
Don't have the part.
I'm sorry. Oh, we got...
We have Captain Colton Craig with us.
Yeah, sorry.
Captain Craig is our jail captain. So this one is, good morning. This one is for RFP 2025-8. This is the Detention Center inmate communication solutions. This was a rebid. We did one earlier, mid-spring-ish. But while we were evaluating those proposals, the FCC changed their rules, and so we had to throw out those proposals and start all over. And so I appreciate all of your patience with this. So background for the commissioners, the purpose of this request for proposal is to contract with a qualified communication solutions vendor to provide all necessary equipment, software, licensed services, and professional services for the Christian County Detention Facility. This is to provide inmate voice calls, video calls, messaging, video messaging, and tablet services for all of its facilities. This is also a revenue share contract for the sheriff's office. Evaluation Committee considered it, myself, Captain Craig, Melissa Robertson from the jail, Bill Rawlings was our technical expert, and then Janine Milner, also non-able voting. We issued this on July 15th. We did an addendum on July 25th, and the RFP closed on August 5th. It was also advertised in the headliner and the newsletter. We received seven proposals. They were CTC Communications, Inc., Cartel, NCIC, which gave us two options for pricing, Home Wave, Paytel Communications, Inc., Inmate Calling Solutions, and Combined Public Communications. The Evaluation Committee met several times. We found that there were several, there were several proposals that were non-responsive, meaning they did not meet all the requirements. And that was Combined Public Communications, Paytel Communications, NCIC for their option one, and CTC Communications, and I've given you all the reasons why they did not, and they've all received their letters. There was one non-competitive proposal, Inc., Cartel, and then we shortlisted to CTC, Home Wave, and NCIC, who are option two. Again, at the request of Captain Craig, we looked at May's numbers with our current incumbent, and we verified those numbers against the pricing with all of these shortlisted, and we came out that Home Wave absolutely hit the ballpark as far as the pricing. Those three proposals were very good proposals out of the seven, and we were very happy. But Home Wave, which is our incumbent, which I'm thrilled that they rose to the top, because after looking at all of those proposals, you can see we really do have the best company for our jail. So with that, unless you want to add anything, our recommendation for award is to Home Wave as the best overall value to the sheriff's office.
Very good, very good. Appreciate that. So comments, questions?
Just, I think maybe explain what this service is. This is for communications in and out for inmates to communicate with.
It's for everything, everything.
Also, courts.
It's phone, not courts, it's phone services for them to call loved ones from the jail. They also offer tablets, so they can make video calls. They can also use it for entertainment, playing games, read books, music, different things like that.
It's a pay-to-play?
Yes.
So it goes through their commissary?
It's separate from commissary, but it's very simple.
Okay.
Yeah.
But they can have an account set up to where it only works when they've got money available?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
Okay, any other comments, questions? If not, I need a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion to approve the RFP 2025-8.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Thank you both very much. Okay, now the next item is Highway Administrator, Ms. Miranda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So to start off, we've made some changes to our CARTS and Road and Bridge Sales Tax processes, and we've also, this year, and we've also changed it from a court order to a commission order, which we've done recently. I'd also like to add another couple updates to the list. Starting with CARTS, the first thing is a mileage update. So we looked at the agencies that the cart was distributed to, which is, of course, C1 and C2 in the county, and then the six special road districts. We have a change in the mileage for almost everyone. Billing specials stayed the same. South Sparta and Stoneshire have stayed the same. C1 has actually gone down. They had previously 297 miles, which in my time here, I've not been able to count for that many miles, so we are hanging steady at 273 miles at C1. C2's gained five miles, which makes sense with the subdivisions and kind of more developed areas that they have. Garrison has gone down, which was something we knew was going to happen once we went through their mileage. And of course, still more special again with some subdivisions in that area, they've gone up about three miles. So I believe this is the first update to the mileage since 2012. So I think it's something important that we need to look at today. And so you can see those existing mileage, existing percentages versus the proposed. They're on the right of that order, which we haven't given a number to yet, but that's the first order. In the same kind of procedure, looking at the Road and Bridge Sales Tax, we've essentially moved those new percentages for C1 and C2 over to that same quarter, so they match. They didn't previously match, I'm not sure why, but essentially for the Road and Bridge Sales Tax, you do a C1 and C2 percentage, and then you also have an apportionment, which is the last change I'm proposing. There is a set apportionment each month that goes to C1 and C2. They're just over $17,000, and that is a fixed number each month. Proposing that go up to $22,000 each month for each side. Looking back at the fund balance on 221, which is where this funding comes from, when I started here, we had a fund balance of about $500,000, which I don't think would keep the road department moving for more than a month. We now have over $5 million in that fund balance, and that's a combination of funding that we received, but also C1 and C2, we've kept our budget requests fairly flat. We try to base them on what we've had the previous year. And then if we get more money, that's great, but at least we don't have to cut services. So a lot of that money just stayed in that fund balance, and what we'd like to do is start putting that directly back into the road maintenance and repair. So like I said, that, we've kept those numbers fairly flat every year, but of course, the cost of materials and the cost of labor has gone up significantly, so even though we have the same amount of money, we're doing less mileage every year. So that additional apportionment equates to about $60,000 a year to each side, which isn't a lot, but it's enough for us to pave another half a mile of road or what have you, without reducing that fund balance, which the fund balance right now, without looking at the county's emergency fund, separate from that, could keep the highway department running for about six months. So, you know, that's not something, I think some folks might say like, okay, well, that's what your general fund emergency is for, but we kind of have a backup, I guess, because, again, we don't want to, we don't want to reduce services, and we don't want to lose any people, so. So those are those numbers there. So you have your existing percentage, existing apportionment, proposed percentage, and proposed apportionment. So I've talked a lot, and probably made that really confusing, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Okay, very good. Questions, comments?
I've also passed this by the treasurer and the auditor, so just so you're aware.
Okay, okay.
That's good. I mean, we had spoke earlier in the week, but for people to know, we have 558, almost 559 miles that common want to come and to cover, so it's amazing that, you know, you guys are able to cover and do what you do with what you have, so you're doing a great job. It's a lot of road, a lot of road.
Do you want us to approve one of those orders, the state, the first order?
I would probably do them one at a time.
Okay.
And so the first one would be, I guess, 2025-09-25-01.
Okay.
So today's date, and then 01.
Okay. In order to approve...
I'll make a motion to approve 0925-01.
Okay. We got a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then one for 02. One for 02.
And then one for 02.
Motion to approve 0925-02.
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I will grab signatures afterwards.
Okay, and then let me ask you this, Ms. Miranda. So what you said at the beginning, and what you and I talked about, so we hadn't really reviewed that, made a change since 2012?
I, it's been since before I was here, and I know that the county did a CART update with MoDOT in 2012, so I'm assuming that's when these mileage is taken over.
Right. So what I'm, what I'm thinking, and I think what you and I talked about was the fact that maybe, maybe we should look at this on an annual, review this on an annual basis, and then you come back with a recommendation to the commission, and we don't wait. Because it did, I mean, some things stayed the same, but several things changed. If we want to be completely accurate and fair to all the different groups that we divide this money into, I don't think there's a problem with the commission looking at that on a yearly basis with you.
Yeah, I agree. I was thinking, at first I was thinking every fall, since it's kind of fall now, but I was thinking every May or June, and that, because these numbers help reflect what we put into our budget for revenue. So we could do it every May or June, and then not only us, but the special road districts would then be aware of what percentages that they can budget for in the following year. But annually, absolutely. I think that's a great idea.
All right. Well, then, I don't know if we need to really make a decision today, but if you want to do May or June this next year, I think that we certainly can bring that back up on the agenda. And would you commissioners have a problem with us reviewing it on an annual basis?
No, I think it's, it's good to keep up with everything.
I'll just make sure it's on there.
Yeah, we will address it next, next year, and I think it'll just be better. Appreciate, appreciate all the work that you did on that, okay?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda is discussion, commission, discussion and vote on the 2026 Employee COLA, Cost of Living. We, since, a little history, a little history is, you know, cost of living is not a raise that we give, a merit raise or anything like that. Some of our employees get that, too. Not everybody, but some people, some people do. And then we have, our HR director has done a great job in a, in a salary matrix that, and has just upgraded, updated that, and through checking outside businesses and things like that. So she'll be giving us a report on that later. But this COLA is something that I think is important, certainly because we've just seen a cost of living increases more than usual over the last several years, probably since COVID. It's just really been a strange economic season, and when I got here in 2020, in my very first day, where Ms. Matty is sitting... I got here in 2020, in my very first day, I, where Ms. Maddie is sitting is where Ms. Amber said, and I was sitting right by her, the number one problem in the county in 2020 was we hired good employees, and they left after a year or two for just a dollar, two, three dollars an hour more than what we were paying them. I think, and I'm really proud of everyone that's involved, that we have improved our compensation package and our benefit package for employees. And we've made a big improvement since 2020, a little bit every year. You can't just do it all at one time, but you've got to continually do it, or otherwise you'll fall behind again. And I do believe that our employees are our number one asset. And I, I think that we have to make sure, if we're going to provide the services that our citizens need and require, we've got to have great employees to do it. And we do. We're very lucky that this county has very good employees. So I think that the commission, we've spent some time studying it and listening to Ms. Amy, our auditor, and our HR director, Ms. Amber, and so I think we are ready to, to make a motion today. So I would entertain. And any other discussion that you all want to make before then, or we're ready to do discussion and then make a motion that you guys are ready?
I don't have anything to.
I don't either. You got, someone want to make a motion for?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to approve a 3% COLA.
Okay, thank you very much. Got a motion to, to approve a 3% COLA for all employees starting in 2026.
Second.
Second. We got a second. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I think that's, and we have, just for the taxpayers and everybody that's here, we have a lot of expenses that have gone on this year in 2025. And seeing what we've had to go through in 2025, I can't imagine that 2026 is going to be that much better. But that being said, I think that this is a good showing of how important it is to, to take care of our employees and, and keep our workforce base intact. So I really do appreciate it. All right, the next item on the agenda is Christian County Good Neighbor Week. And so a lot of people don't know anything about this. This is fairly new. It's only been going on in Missouri for three years. This is the third year. Governor Parsons signed a bill in, three years ago, in the House and Senate passed it, and then the governor signed it to make September 28th through October 4th as Missouri Good Neighbor Week. Other states have been doing this for 10 or 15 years. It is not something that's been going on forever, but some states are way ahead of us, okay? When I saw this through NACO, our National Association of Counties, we knew the county, Christian County belongs to NACO, and also MAC, our Missouri Association of Counties, is involved in this. I know you've probably maybe seen it on KY3 and some other news programs where they've been talking about Springfield's doing a Good Neighbor Week, Nixa's doing a Good Neighbor Week, and different parts of the state's doing a Good Neighbor Week. So I thought this would be a good idea to start this county, Christian County, the best county in the state, to do this. This year, we're only doing this proclamation. We're going to read the proclamation. We're going to sign it. But next year, now that we've got Ms. Brenda here with us, we are going, and I've already been talking to businesses, this is not going to be a hard thing to do. Businesses want to give out some nice prizes for the people, our citizens that get nominated as good neighbors. So what we're going to be looking for, and, and I know we already have neighbors, we have citizens out there right now in Christian County that's going above and beyond to help their neighbor. We know that. That's why, that's why Christian County is such a good county. It's the best county. However, we need to award those people and, and recognize them. And so next year, we'll have a contest way ahead of time so we can invite the winners into one of these meetings and just really officially recognize them and give them some type of award. So I'm going to read this. This is what Ms. Brenda and I worked on this week. Whereas the county of Christian, the fastest-growing county in the state, is dedicated to making Christian County the best place to live, raise a family, work, own a business, or retire. Whereas the county's values define who we are and how we will accomplish our mission and vision, providing, providing peace, security, and stability for all citizens of Christian County. Whereas the state of Missouri has designated the week of September 28th to October 4th, Missouri Good Neighbor Week, a time to encourage and celebrate acts of kindness and connection with our community. And whereas, the county of Christian is home to nearly 100,000 citizens who volunteer their time, talent, and resources to improve our county through state initiatives, area initiatives, civic organizations, and everyday acts of kindness. And whereas, these acts of community engagement, whether large or small, contribute to a sense of belonging, a shared vision, and the collective well-being of all who live, work, and play in Christian County. Now therefore, Lynn A. Morris, Presiding Commissioner of Christian County, Missouri, with Western Commissioner Johnny Williams and Eastern Commissioner Bradley H. Jackson, hereby proclaim the week of September 28th through October 4th, 2025, as Good Neighbor Week. So that's our proclamation. We're going to sign that. We've got the same kind of pen if you want to use that. And so, and we'll get, ask for a motion to approve this as something that we would go ahead and act on every, every year to really recognize our great citizens who are good neighbors.
You want me to make that motion?
Yeah, we'll let you make one today.
I would make that motion.
Okay, thank you very much. We got a motion?
Second.
And we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. All right. I think we're now down to communications. I've got just a few, and we'll see who else has communications. One of the things that I wanted to make sure that people know, especially because we've got this live on YouTube, is, is today, September 25th. It's something that annually happens, and a lot of people donate blood and help people because you're saving lives when you do that. Ozark and Nixa's having a challenge today between the mayors. And just like football or anything else, we've got a challenge going on. And so, and Ozark is First Baptist Church. If you want to donate blood today, First Baptist Church all day long. At Nixa is the Aldergates Church. And so just wanted to let people know that's something that is going on. And Ms. Amber, do you want to talk about Friday Night Lights or anything? Make any kind of announcement?
It's happening. We are having our, we're having a planning meeting on October 15th. We only do, I mean, it's kind of a well-oiled machine at this point, so we just do one in-person meeting, and then the rest of, we pretty much have it down. But the actual Friday Night Lights will be happening on the 12th of September from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. And we'll have a carriage ride again. And we have multiple schools in Christian County who will be having their kids come perform, including Sparta and Nixa and Ozark, and I believe the cleverest.
Okay, so it's just one night this week?
Same, that's what you heard, same.
But I tell you what, we have a large crowd, and Richard and his team, our maintenance team, they're instrumental in that. Several people are instrumental in this. And we'll have, I don't know how many people. It's, the whole campus, all four sides of this courthouse is full. The lights are beautiful that we have. And City of Ozark's actually helping this year financially that Ms. Amber and I asked if they would contribute. And then next year, hopefully they can contribute more because Historic River District has helped us and the county. And a lot of the stuff that we had bought was by donations, but it's just a real great family thing to do. So.
Destinated on.
Be sure and be thinking about that. Anything else that, that you all have, anything going on that we need to know about and everything?
Next weekend's the Ozark Craft Festival. So everybody should be prepared for that.
Okay.
Be a busy weekend here in downtown Ozark. Also, Ozark Market Days will be on the same day, the Saturdays.
Okay, so Ozark Market Days, and then the Ozark Arts and Crafts Festival is next weekend, and that's a big, big event in this area. And are you part of 4C Sertoma?
I am.
Yep. So one of the things that just I mentioned, and I'll get approval from, from Ms. Amber and other people if we want to do that, but I just want to mention, we've been asked, the City of Ozark, the City of Nixa, and the county, the three entities have been asked by 4C Sertoma to have a, a barrel or box for a coat collection this year. They've never been involved, involved the city government in those two towns and, and the county. So we will need to let them know whether we want to participate. I'd love to participate and help collect coats, but I'm not exactly sure where we can put it because there's not a lot of space out in front of the deputies. And then, I don't know, we want everybody to go through the security to donate a coat. But I could visualize that we could collect a lot of coats right here in this building.
We have the large Christmas gifts we use for display that have donation boxes. You just lift the lid and put them in.
Could we do that?
We could set one of them over here by the parking area and go ahead and put coat donations, paint a mark out there on it, and then they could pick them up. They'll be clear. But we already have the box.
Okay.
It just looks like a big present.
Well, I think that.
So just a little history on that. There used to be the, the Nixa Optimus Club was in charge of that, their, their organization folded. They asked our, our club to take that over. I'm not really involved in that, but our current president of the organization, he heads up that event. And I mean, it's really good. So we, we take those coats. We have a cleaner in the county that will take care of all the dry cleaning of those, make sure that they're perfectly laundered, and they get them to the clothing bank so that kids and, and adults as well would have coats to help go through the winter time. So it's, it's a really good thing to do. And, you know, I think our, our county has done an excellent job in all aspects of taking care of the least of these, if you will. And it's just, just another thing that I, I'm very proud to reside in this county and all the efforts that people that live here put forward to take care of everybody in our county. So anybody that has the ability to donate a coat, you know, that's in good condition, we'd appreciate that. So thank you.
So I think, you know, listen to the sentiment, I think that we could, we could do that. I think that's a great idea, Mr. Richard. So, so I'll let them know. We'll, we'll put that in the agenda. We'll vote on that next week. But I think that would be, that'd be good. That's something that we really could help county citizens with. So if there's no other business, we have doughnuts, and we have some punch that you all are welcome to stay. We're celebrating. Our penthouse counselor here, and so we'll start immediately and have a doughnut. So we.